All right, uh, welcome to Thomasville City School Board meeting. Um, it is now five P M. And we'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, we do have a quorum present. Uh, we have Mister Taylor Williams, Vice President, Mister Marshall Pritchett, uh, Miss Rita Nichols, and myself, Jim Davis. This time I would like to ask, uh, Miss Rita Nichols, uh, to give the dedication.
Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, as we begin this new school year, help us to make decisions that are decisions in the best interest of our students, faculty, staff, and all those concerned with our schools. We ask for your guidance in all that we do, as soon as I ask in my name.
Can you all have a copy of tonight's agenda in your packet? Um, I would like to recommend that we approve the agenda as it's written.
You heard the recommendation from, uh, Superintendent, for him to move?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That vote is carried unanimously.
Can you also have a copy of, um, the minutes from the board meeting on July nineteenth, as well as the call meeting on July twenty-fifth? Um, I would recommend that we, you approve the minutes that are in your packet as they're written.
You heard the recommendation from the Superintendent? Can I get a move?
I'll say move.
Second.
On the second. Um, all in favor, raise your right hand. That vote is carried unanimously.
Okay, at this time, we'll have, uh, Ms. Angelica Gibson with our financial report.
Good evening, everybody. I have the other packet I gave you June and July, but I'm only going to go with the July, um, report for example. The payroll for this month is nine hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and five dollars. And the increase is because the, um, the rate went into effect for the twelve-hundred employees already started in, um, July. The account payable was four sixty-nine, three hundred and seven dollars. And, um, I think you have mistaken your packet, but I fixed it on the report. The local school part was a loan, forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty. And the, um, that amount is higher than normal because of a train invoice that was included. It was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's why that amount was higher than normal. So this is your summary and the board balance, um. So that should be July thirty-first will be two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, two million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. So that amount is still in the green and we're currently two point seven eight times, um, the requirement of our monthly expenses, which is nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a month. And this is, um, showing the comparison for July, um, from twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And we are currently, um, five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars above what it was last year. And that's because of the, um, the funds that we've been receiving as the Elsa funds. And this is just, um, another chart showing the general fund balance comparison from year to year. And the trend also included, which is still going upward. So our total expenditures is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars more than it was last year. And that's probably, that includes some of the, um, the support of the, um, the raises and for the teachers and support. And so for July twenty-twenty-two, we spent fifty point five percent in instructional services, twenty point seven percent in instructional support services, ten point five percent in maintenance and operation, operation and maintenance, point five percent auxiliary service, eight point one percent in general administration, point three percent in capital outlay, and two point two percent in other expenditures, and two point seven percent in transfer revenue. And that's the end of my report. And while I'm up here, I would just go ahead and address the, um, the tax report that was included in your document. And for twenty-twenty-one, the pile is empty. But in September, I talked to Ms. Debbie from the, um, um, city office, Ms. Debbie Reynolds, and she said it would be a one-time payment in September, and that would bring them current. But we have them in the rear some. Some have to get with the auditorium to see the difference because she's saying that they're up to date. And so, and she no longer sends the report, so I'm not sure when the, she normally send it month by month or what it would be. But she said she was going to send the whole sum in September, the check for the alcohol tax.
Is that the reason why they hadn't sent the report?
I'm not sure why they hadn't sent the report.
Uh, is they gonna do it one time, you said one time?
She said normally for the, um, city alcohol tax, it is a one-time check in September.
For the alcohol tax, sales taxes.
I got the alcohol tax and so much as a sales tax.
So for the sales tax, she said they quit sending the report because they capped it at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So they capped it?
Well, she said it's been kept since twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, they started sending five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so she said they was no longer sending the report because we were only going to give five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Let's see it then.
That's at the bottom. I know you probably don't know, I'll ask somebody else. I was wondering if there was an earmarked percentage where we were supposed to get sales tax, and then why they capped it at five fifty instead of being a set percentage if they have it?
It, I think it was a set percent of, um, I'm not sure of the amount, but it was a set percent that schools were getting. But I don't know, she said in eighteen, nineteen, years agreed that it was going to be a cap.
Because of the hospital?
Why? Probably, but she said they were remaining going to the hospital, so.
Would it agree on that, or?
We don't get to agree.
We don't agree over that.
The city council.
The city council.
We just say thank you.
And it's been two payments made, um, for this year. A hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars was made and a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars was made. And in September, we'll receive the other one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars on the city's sales tax.
It's a quarterly payment on that money.
So they make three payments. And they, we also have them in the years for the sales tax as well. But Ms. Reynolds saying on their books, they're current, so I will have to get with the auditorium to see what the difference is. Do you all have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
All right, thank you.
All right, um. Yes.
Okay, um, you've heard the financial report from, uh, Ms. Gibson and all the explanations needed with that. Um, I would ask that you approve the financial report as given.
You heard the recommendation from the Superintendent, um, on the financial report? Can I get a move?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That vote is carried unanimously. Now we'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
Okay, I think I have a couple of things to add. I have a recognition, first of all. Um, I would like for our parent liaisons to stand when we call their name. Um, Ms. Nikki Schumake is at Thomasville Elementary School. We are so glad to have her there. We have Miss Randy Jones at Thomasville Middle School. So glad to have Randy back there. And then another new face at the high school, Ms. Keisha Webb is the parent liaison at Thomasville High School. We are thrilled. And I believe what they do to help us track down forms and collect things and do many, many, many other things. They're, they're on the front lines of our school and they help us so much communicate with our parents. So we, we appreciate all that the three of you did. Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Um, next, I have two presentations. The first one, um, Mister Daryl Drinker and Mister Ken Nichols are here to talk to us about, um, something that we're going to vote on later in the night about a proclamation.
Thank you, Superintendent. A few months ago, after the unfortunate death of Coach Bill McNair, Ken Nichols and I started kicking around ideas as to how we could recognize Coach McNair for the things that he did for Thomasville High School, for the students here, and, uh, for the school itself. And, uh, I have prepared a proclamation, which I am going to read, that I think will explain to you. And, and I've talked to board members about this. I talked to city council members about this before we did it. But this is what we recommend and what we believe will happen, uh, to honor the memory of Coach McNair going forward. And this reads, proclamation by the Thomasville City School Board, whereas William L. Bill McNair, here and after referred to as Coach McNair, was born May twenty-fifth, nineteen thirty-eight. And whereas Coach McNair graduated from Robert E. Lee High School in Montgomery, Alabama, in nineteen fifty-six, where he was a three-point sports star in football, basketball, and baseball. And whereas Coach McNair graduated from the University of West Alabama, which was formerly Livingston University in nineteen sixty-two, where he lettered in football and baseball. And whereas Coach McNair was named Head Basketball Coach at Woodlawn High School in Birmingham, Alabama, from nineteen sixty-five through nineteen sixty-nine, where he had a record of one hundred and fourteen wins and thirty-four losses, and was named Jefferson County Basketball Coach of the Year in nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas Coach McNair served Thomasville High School as its head football coach from nineteen eighty-one through nineteen ninety-two, amassing an overall record of one hundred two wins and thirty-six losses, with a winning percentage of seventy-three point nine percent. And whereas during that tenure, Coach McNair's Thomasville Tigers outscored opponents three thousand five hundred six to one thousand five hundred forty-six, and shut out twenty-six opponents while winning area championships in eleven of twelve years. And whereas Coach McNair, in Coach McNair's first year as the head coach of the Thomasville Tigers, the team went undefeated during the regular season for the first time since nineteen thirty-five. And whereas Coach McNair's Thomasville Tigers won the first state championship in the history of Thomasville High School in nineteen eighty-eight, while going fourteen and one. And whereas Coach McNair was named to coach in the Alabama Mississippi All-Star Game for, at nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas under Coach McNair's leadership, Thomasville High School was voted Birmingham U's outstanding sports program in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Coach McNair was named Birmingham Touchdown Club's Coach of the Year in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Coach McNair amassed the second-most wins during his twelve-year tenure in the history of Thomasville High School football. And whereas Coach McNair coached twenty-four players during his years at Thomasville High School, who were named First Team All-State Players by the Alabama High School Athletic Association. And whereas Coach McNair coached for more than fifty years and was a part of numerous state championships at the private school level. And whereas Coach McNair's proudest accomplishment was being able to play a role in encouraging young men to become successful and productive adults. Now therefore, the Thomasville City Superintendent of Education and the Thomasville City Board are hereby proud to proclaim and announce that the Football Field House, that shall here and after be named the Coach Bill McNair Field House, in honor of the great career, influence, and accomplishments of Coach William L. Bill McNair, done this the twenty-third day of August, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Mister Drinker. Okay, and next, um, we have Emily Thornton is going to give us a presentation to explain to us about the C E P, which stands for Community Eligibility Provisions. And you did have some things in your packet so that you could be familiar with that before she presented. Emily, you have the floor.
You're going to stand first.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Emily Thornton, and I am the Child Nutrition Director for Thomasville City Schools. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to, to present to the school board about the Community Eligibility Provision. But first, I want to acknowledge, uh, my child nutrition staff, and the administrators, and the personnel in Thomasville City Schools for the outstanding job that they did trying to maintain a healthy environment for the students to eat in during the COVID environment. We still have some challenges. There still are some food shortages, equipment shortages. And by now, a lot of people have heard about boarding dairy going out of business in this area. But we're working on a solution. So with that being said, being the Child Nutrition Director is a action-packed, fun-filled, sometimes stressful position that I have. And at the end of last school year, we were hoping nationwide that the legislature would extend the free meals for all students because our children have been eating free for two years at a higher reimbursement rate. Well, the legislature decided that they did not want to pass the law to expand, um, free meals to all students. So what happened was Dr. Mackey, the Superintendent of Alabama, sent out a memo requesting that all school systems consider going C E P, which is Community Eligibility Provision, Provision One, or Provision Two. In the past, I was not a proponent of going with C E P for Thomasville City Schools because our free and reduced SNAP information, food stamp information was very low, and I did not want the program to suffer a loss. But since there's been some changes with the C E P regulations, you're not locked in for three years, it's one year at a time, and our numbers have gone up. I have seen that there's, it's a good risk to take. And that's on a child nutrition standpoint. I am not an expert in federal programs, so I'm not going to address that part of it. But I did provide you some information that the State Department gave me about federal programs and child nutrition. So I'll start my presentation. Thomasville City Schools' program mission is to provide the children of our school district the best possible health, nutrition, and safety conditions. The prevailing attitude exhibited by all food service employees should be, we are here to serve the children. What is Community Eligibility Provision? And I will refer to it as C E P because that's a shorter version, I'll refer to it both ways. The Community Eligibility Provision was established in twenty-ten as part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, and became available nationwide, school year twenty-fifteen. C E P allows higher poverty schools to offer meals to students at no cost without the need of collecting applications. And I just want to put a note here, Thomasville City Schools is the only school system in this area that is not C E P at this time. And that had a lot to do with the industry that we have. We have Walmart, we have, um, Golden Dragon Clothesline. Um, so we had a lower poverty rate, I mean, yes, lower poverty. To qualify for C E P, schools must serve breakfast and lunch. What are some of the benefits of participating in the Community Eligibility Provision? For the students, they get to enjoy free, healthy meals. It also eliminates the free and reduced meal stigma. For the parents, there's no household applications required. No refilling lunch accounts or getting those dreaded letters saying that you're in the negative, then please send some money. And again, no stigma attached to free and reduced-priced meals. Now, I want to address the no stigma. When the children come through the cafeteria line, nobody's supposed to know that they're free and reduced. But they know, and sometime people speculate that they're free and reduced. And so there's a perception that if they're going in the cafeteria, they're going because they're getting a free meal. So if you provide the meals to everybody, then the children all eat, and you can't tell the difference between a free, reduced, or paid when everybody's eating for free. For the schools, there's a reduced in paperwork, calls for administrator, and Lord have mercy, phone calls. Because you get a lot of phone calls, especially with the P E B T. The parents want to make sure that their children are eligible. Do I have the application? They only got one child, a letter for one child, they got five children. There's a lot of questions that go into doing applications. It also streamlines the meal service operation. Students spend less time waiting in the lines and more time eating. And it, uh, it eliminates unpaid meal charges. Currently, we've been in school, this is the second full week, and Thomasville City Schools has five hundred dollars unpaid debt. And with that unpaid debt, any unpaid debt that occurs and is still, um, outstanding at the end of the school year, we, um, the parents should pay for the unpaid debt. But a lot of times, the P T O is paying to clean up the unpaid debt. Um, there's donations from, from administrators and child nutrition staff trying to clean up unpaid debt. And also, we also get donations from local churches. What is the eligibility threshold for participating in C E P or Community Eligibility Provision? The percentage of the identified student must be at least forty percent enrollment as of April first. The eligibility is determined for entire school system, or group of schools within the system, or a single school within the school system. What, what does it mean when I say identified student? Basically what it is, is that the children that are eligible for SNAP, um, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or formerly known as food stamps, they are the, the data that we're using to identify if we're eligible for C E P at this time. What is Thomasville City Schools' percentage? Our current percentage, according to the State Department, is forty-nine point sixty-seven percent. In order to be eligible for C E P, it needs to be at least forty percent. The magic number, the identified, the identified student percentage to receive all meals free reimbursement rate is sixty-two point five percent. The percentage is broken down by school. Thomasville Elementary School, the identified students is over, close to sixty percent. The middle school, forty-eight percent, and the high school is only thirty-six point eight eight percent. I haven't read because the high school alone could not be a C E P school, but the other two can. Now, if we combine the high school with the middle school, or put all three schools together, they'll be eligible for free meals. But combined, the school district, um, percentage is forty-nine point six seven percent. How does this information compare to the regular free and reduced-priced data that we currently get? The data that we currently have is based upon direct certification of those SNAP, um, eligible children, Medicaid, and household application, which is based upon income most of the time. Current data, Thomasville Elementary School, seventy-one point six percent of the children are eligible for free meals. We, the reduced is five point one percent. Thomasville High School, sixty-nine point nine percent free, reduced seven point three percent. Thomasville Middle School, seventy-two point seven percent, and reduced four point six percent. And we're still getting applications in. Applications are accepted all during the school year. District-wide, Thomasville City Schools eligibility free, seventy-one point one percent, reduced five point five percent, and paid twenty-three point four percent. Okay, Thomasville City Schools, if you take the, the forty-nine point six percent, six seven percent C E P that the state said we were, and you multiply it by the one point six USDA multiplier, that means our free is actually seventy-nine point four seven two percent, if you're C E P, which is higher than what we're doing on paper and direct cert. So when it converts to, instead of Thomasville City Schools having seventy-one percent free, five point five reduced, and twenty-three paid, it would be free seventy-nine point four seven percent and paid twenty point five three percent. And there's no reduced, um, reimbursement when you do C E P. I'm going to show you the current, um, USDA rates. For national school lunch, the current rate for a free meal is four dollars and forty-three cents. Reduced, four dollars and three cents, and paid eighty-seven cents. For national school breakfast, it's free two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Reduced, two dollars and thirty-seven cents, and paid fifty cents. The students eat breakfast for free because we do a universal breakfast. The decision was made not to have to cause hardship for the parents to have to pay for the breakfast and the lunch meal, when in the past, they have been, um, getting breakfast meal for free for at least three years. when in the past they have been, um, getting breakfast meal for free for at least three years before the pandemic. So the high schools, the, not the high school, but the students, um, paid price is two dollars and seventy-five cent for lunch, and reduced is forty cents at all three schools. So I did a little calculation for breakfast, universal breakfast. Uh, so for universal breakfast, the reimbursement is based upon the children's eligibility, free, reduced, paid. So the best thing to do is to have breakfast in the classroom, um, second chance breakfast, something en masse where you get all the students eating, and there's no stigma when they're all eating for free or in the classroom. But you can't have more paid students eating than the reduced or the free because you're only going to get paid that fifty cents and not whatever, you know, the, not the, um, two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Okay, so I took the information from August first to the twenty-third, and I calculated how many meals were free by reimbursement rate, and the total is twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents if you do it the way that we're doing it now, non-CEP. If you take the community eligibility percentage of seventy-nine point four seven for free, and the, um, you take the five, five thousand nine hundred and twenty-four, multiply it by the seventy-nine point forty-seven, you have four hundred and seven meals, and the paid will be one thousand two hundred sixteen. So I plugged those numbers in, and if we were CEP, we would earn thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-eight thousand thirty-six cents, which is an increase of three hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents just for the period of August first through the twenty-third. So what are the barriers? There's a perception of lost funding. Federal programs depend on household application to get their data for Title I, E-rate. And people also call for the data for grant funds. And I'm sure there's some other programs attached to it too. Any child nutrition program that suffers a financial loss because of going into CEP must be reimbursed with non-federal funds. So basically what they're saying is if we don't operate efficiently, there's not enough students coming in, then the general funds will have to, um, bail the child nutrition out. Child nutrition cannot take a loss. There's also, um, a concern about the community eligibility, committee, community eligibility program impact on individual school Title I ranking. Well, a little bit I do know is that, that say Thomasville City Schools has three schools, and if the elementary school has a higher, um, Ms. Calhoun could correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the Thomasville Elementary School has a higher free and reduced rate, that may put them at a certain level, you know, and between the three schools. Is that right, Ms. Calhoun?
It puts them at a certain level, but because we are a Title I district, that makes the difference.
Yes, ma'am.
From having that target school.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, we don't even operate under any CIP guidelines. So right now, it wouldn't affect us.
Thank you.
Even if you all get, it's not going to affect us right now.
Thank you. But that's one of the perceptions at other school systems. What are the benefits for CEP? Again, it eliminates the free and reduced stigma, no meal application, increases student participation, no unpaid meal debt, helps reduce hunger, improves health, and supports children's academic achievement. The minimum length of enrollment for CEP is one year. It can be evaluated at the end of the year, so we're not locked in. Because of the pandemic, a waiver was issued where we have until September thirtieth to, um, decide if we want to be CEP for this year. If not, you're just collecting data for the next year. Any questions?
It sounded like a good program.
My concern at the beginning of the school year was for the families. There's a lot of people who cannot afford to pay fifty-five dollars a week when they've been, the, the cost of food in the grocery store is high, gas is high. You know, some people are not employed, you know, and so I was looking out for the best interest of the family and the children. At the high school, the children, they're not eating right now because they don't know, their parents may not have told them that they were eligible for free meals. There's a stigma to it. And they're, they're just not eating. It's, it's just a fact. The, the elementary school is about the same as last year, but the high school has been a big impact on them.
So what needs to be done to produce a better situation? Do we need more engagement from, from parents to, to apply for these? Is, is that what?
Well, basically, no, we, we, we need for C-